Order. It's 11:03. Welcome, everybody. We would like to... Are there any changes to our agenda? Okay. So I'd like to have a motion to approve our agenda.
Move. Oops. I'll move.
Second.
Oh, okay. Agenda approved as written. Well, as presented... Oh, come here. Sorry. You don't ever want me to run meetings. May I have a vote, a call to vote to approve the agenda as written? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda approved. All right. So, review and approval of the November 13 Finance Committee meeting minutes. Do we have any... Do I have to make a motion to approve it? Okay, a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, and is there any discussion? I have some discussion.
Okay.
I wasn't there and I really apologize for that. I was having a good time. I don't know whether that was the good... Yeah, I think that was the good time.
Okay, well, I would like to... Let's see. Audit is... The audit follow-ups. I have a question about an audit calendar. Do we have anything like that created?
Typically, what happens is it won't get created until we have our kickoff meeting with the auditors, where they start to build out the timeline for what they're doing.
And do we need a calendar for our preparation for that kickoff? Or is that when the prep begins?
That's when the prep begins. I mean, the only other prep I'm doing right now is it's sort of really more just business maintenance that generally got put off until the audit that I can do now, which are things like pulling the conflicts of interest and going ahead and looking at purchases as we're doing them and sort of marking them for capitalization versus trying to do a year in review. I mean, there'll still be a year in review, but it's a little easier to grab them now as you're kind of thinking about it than it is, you know, three months from now when you're trying to do it in a lump and maybe something else breaks or something.
I get it. It's cleanup as you go. I love it.
Yeah, so it's... Yeah.
So when is the kickoff with the auditors?
Typically, it's going to be May for the upcoming year. And they'll give us some prelim stuff to do before then, and then the meat and potatoes starts at the beginning of the fiscal year, July 1.
Do they build the calendar for us?
In essence, yeah, because it's going to be based on their timeline, you know, more so. I mean, I would say what we're... I mean, I think we got a really good model from last year for '24, so I really don't expect it to be a whole lot different. So there should be... I should have some... We should have some prelim work, you know, May going into June, and then we'll have the big stuff starting July 1, you know, shutting down to September, the draft of their statements coming back to us and that sort of thing, you know, gunning for once again. I think that October timeframe, which was great.
Okay. Okay. Well, just keep us up to date on that when you have your kickoff.
Yep.
All right. I also had a question about... Did Ann Schaufer sign the contract and is that in place?
Yes. It's signed and in place. We haven't had any reason to use her and call upon her, but yeah.
Okay, well, I wouldn't imagine it, because her duties will kick in with the audit.
Right.
Okay, so she has signed.
Yeah.
She's signed and that's complete and it's on file. Good. All right. Question for you guys. The branch requests for funds and special projects. Can we just have an update as to what is completed and what's on hold, maybe? Is that just the list that we have in here?
Yes. I was going to tell you specifics on the tech, but several of the branches, I believe it is that I included in the acting directors' report, but several branches have received their branch laptops, the switches, the routers. There's a couple of branches left and library admin to get the rollout of the laptops. But they've all been purchased.
That wasn't reported for this.
Yes.
Are there any things in... I guess what I'm really getting at, are there any things in this list here from the minutes that have not been started? Would you...
I was going to say, there's been starts to every bit. At least conversations or information gathering, like for the AEDs, we've got some information from Hanover Parks and Rec. We do need to get back in touch with Fleet about the Sprinter van. Hanover General Services has been out to Mechanicsville to assess the lighting situation and look for solutions, so that has been in the works.
Have they given any quote or not?
They have not. I believe that they were scheduled to go over there during one of those weeks where we had weather issues. So that will need to be rescheduled there. The bookstoreage and displays, Jeff is here today. He's taking those around to get a count of exactly what we need, what fits where. So that's in the works as well. We've got the branded materials for marketing ordered, the outreach kits ordered. The ALL stations, we needed to go back and update the quote on those because our amounts... Our amount of ALL stations that we're ordering has changed with King William's withdrawal. The Help Desk Tickets software has been purchased and is employed. Records retention, we are in a good place with that. Canvas subscriptions have been ordered and we're utilizing those now. So we have made...
The news... I don't see the news bank stuff on here, but I think it's in here someplace, I'm sure.
Right, which is...
But it's... That's been purchased in the...
Yes, it has been, yes.
So the only things that haven't been purchased are the AEDs, the van.
The van.
Everything else is... We've gotten...
We... Yeah.
Yeah, the early literacy stations are a little bit further along, but they have not been...
They've not been received, but we've got the PO and everything set up. It's just waiting out for the vendor to read, give us the new invoice amount.
Okay.
Take... Yeah, let them loose.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that update.
Sure.
Does anybody have any other questions about material... Information in the minutes? Okay, seeing none. I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
We do.
We do? Oh, that's right, because we just did discussion. Okay, so call to vote for the approval of the minutes as written?
So move.
Anybody opposed? No, no. Okay. We have just voted to approve the minutes as written. Thank you very much. All right. So now we are going to discuss the budget amendments, considerations due to King William's departure. So, Ken.
So with the announcement of King William's withdrawal, the question we had to ask ourselves is how does that impact our budget for FY '26?
Thank you, Jay.
So what I worked up was the actual budget. I've got details behind the scenes that we can kind of drive into with questions, but I've also gone ahead and fashioned together at least the draft for presentation because we really are going to have back to sort of having the library board vote on a new proposed budget as we go forward here. So first thing is, as far as we work through this and I can make notes, we can make changes and suggestions, is an idea of what do we know today about the impact, about the withdrawal and the impacts? So we know King William will withdraw from PRL at the end of fiscal year '25, June 30 of '25, pending approval by the local partners, although I think by the time we get ready to present, that line will be changed. So this is sort of a moving target, kind of a living document as we go. The other thing is we know King William's withdrawal from PRL, you know, these are the areas we know that'll impact in the following areas, and these are where we start to get in some harder numbers so we can discuss a budget going forward. We know the branch size will go from nine branches to seven. We know there will be an estimated loss of revenue of approximately $745,000 when we compare it to FY '25. We will be losing $371,000 at the branch level between West Point and Upper King William. PRL will lose $232,000 at the shared service level. That was King William County's donation to shared services based on their population's size. And then we know with King William's departure that we will be losing $142,000 in state aid.
Ken, I wonder if we can, on the PowerPoint somewhere, that $371,000 at the branch level, maybe you can even put in parentheses something that that's for their staff.
Yeah.
You know, I just think it might be good to have it on the PowerPoint, you know, there. So, you know, it is a loss for us, but it's not going to impact our bottom line as much as it's going to impact, you know, them.
Ken, you work. I'll work on it.
Yeah.
I'll work on noting it, making it look better as I go along, so if something jumps out to me.
Okay.
And don't be offended by the red. My ability to see certain colors is pretty limited. So I've got a small palate to work with, sorry. Crayon box is really small. We do know that with the withdrawal, there will be a reallocation and a reduction of staff at the branch and at the shared service levels, just with the amount of money that we're working at that we're losing from revenue. We know there will also be a large increase in expenses to the books and materials line and that we will also have a decrease in expenses in the other budget areas. So those are things, vehicles, supplies, contractual equipment, continuing end, the other areas. We do have some unknown impacts. This will probably be as fluid as the known stuff, but these are the two ones, the two big ones we have right now. And these are the following items. They could change a little bit of the presented information. Existing lease contracts that cannot be exited earlier have a penalty. So leases, this isn't a great impact, but it's worth mentioning. So these are leases with an early exit penalty or leases that would have an early exit penalty or we can't exit, a no exit, account for a very small amount of the recommended deduction that staff will show you when we get to the budget. It's less than $5,000.
I would still like to... Excuse me for interrupting you, but I believe that that's King William's expense, that they need to reimburse us for that. That should be in the MOU. Any penalties that we incur as a result of pulling out of any contracts or leases is definitely something they need to pay for.
And just to a note, because we did sort of face this challenge with King and Queen. Well, with King and Queen, they did pick up the remaining leases that we had. This is particularly when we're talking about these leases. We're looking at the copiers are leased expenses, really. That's what we're talking about here. So we've got the copiers that are the leased expenses. So it wasn't an issue with the King and Queen.
Yeah, and they may want to do that.
And they might want to do that.
So it might not be an issue, but in case they don't.
The other issue... The other item we would have is an unemployment, an impact with unemployment. So with King and Queen, staff reallocated to other branches or they left PRL for new employment as they realized that King and Queen was leaving and that branch would be no longer be a PRL branch, it would be shutting down. So no staff from King and Queen sought unemployment benefits from PRL. So we really don't have... We know this could be an impact because we are looking at a much larger staff departure than we were before. And for this, we're going to have to lean, you know, back to Hanover and seek guidance on the impact for this. This could very well be another area in the MOU where King William...
Definitely should be. Yeah, we've actually talked about it already, yeah. And they were going to check with HR.
There's natural consequences to bailing early. I mean, just... And I'm sure they won't be surprised for us to make that request. How many staff are we talking about? I know I asked that question and I forget exactly how many it is.
We will get into that. Here we go.
All right, thank you.
So now we'll get to the big thing, I guess, everybody that is really interested in. So this is the budget.
We're putting the real money here.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, let's get to the meat and potatoes, so to speak. So this is the staff recommended revised '26 budget versus the '25 budget. So you'll see up here, we've got reductions for King William. We've got the reductions for state aid. We still look at our other income areas and we're going to see income in those continues. And that's mainly in the investment income.
Quick question, though. When we had originally... And when we approved the '26 budget, we had an additional $38,000 coming from King William, didn't we not?
We did, and I can compare that to what we originally proposed here next, to show you that. And the reason I've got that one is because, simply because I said we are taking cuts and if you look, all these lines are negative except for a few. And that's because I do want to show that what we budgeted for '26 really is a reduction now with King William. We just don't have enough of a reduction in these, like the contractual or the insurance line to give me... Or the utilities line to give me an actual negative amount here because we still have some expenses from other places, like particularly the line of utilities. What's driving our utility expenses was not an increase in utilities at King William branches. It was an increase in Hanover branches driving those. So, but that's compared to our '25. We're looking at a change from what we have currently down less than $632,000. After we offset what we have, some changes in here in increases. And particularly in the reserve fund, I can talk about where we're getting that, talking about that $15,000 as well.
And could I just ask you to close that one tab over to the left, just to make it a little bigger for me?
Oh, yeah, sure, sure, sure. Is that better?
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
So this is... This is what I'm comparing here is the budget the library board approved for us to take forward to the other jurisdictions versus what we're going to be looking at now with King William's departure. And this is where you'll see, I mean, we still have, you know, we'd asked for $38,000 more, so we're losing that. The state aid that we thought we were going to have at '713 is quite substantially more. The reserve fund's about there and the same, but if you're in the books and the materials, but you can see here where our big cuts are coming across the board in everything. Everything's got a reduction, minus contractual, which is up just flatlining with taking out some of the...
Where it says salary and benefits, that... The reduction is taking out King William's?
It's taking out King William's and the loss of a position or two losses of both positions in shared services.
Right, okay, that's right. We did do that. Okay.
Real quick, the only position we did keep was IT, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll show you that. The only position we have recommended IT being is the IT. So, yeah, as you can see, I mean, we are, you know, when you compare it to what we looked at in '20, earlier this year, we're looking at a loss across the board. So we'll sort of get into the nitty gritty. So the impact on salary and benefits, and these numbers, just so you know, I'm going back and comparing to '25 versus what we thought we were going to have in '26 when I'm presenting my numbers. So we are looking at a reduction of a little more than $500,000, half a million dollars. PRL, we will no longer employ the following positions at the branch level. So for West Point, we're going to lose a branch manager, which is full-time, a library service specialist and an associate that is part-time, or four associate positions for a total of six there. At Upper King William, we will be losing a branch manager, two library service specialists, six associates, and a custodian. So it's nine positions there. And then at the shared level, we will no longer have the following positions. A deputy director, which is a full-time position. The human resources and public relations assistant, which was a full-time position, and the part-time collections librarian in the collection strategy department. You know, the good news is with these two right now, we had a retirement here. It's been vacant since we knew King William was making a decision, and this one was also vacant. We had high hopes, starting at the first of the year to fill that, and we held off as soon as we thought King William was leaving. So at least for these areas, we're not actually saying goodbye to a person. In total, we're looking at 19 positions state, system-wide, full-time and 15.
Well, and also the deputy director of Sharita's retirement.
By virtue of, yeah, retirement.
So nobody's getting fired. Nobody's getting cut. Okay.
At least at the shared level. I mean, the branch level's, yeah, a little bit different story. Yeah, so just sort of give you an idea of the organizational chart. Where we kind of thought we would be with King William's continued participation, we would have two deputy directors, business operations manager, human resources, public relations, two IT positions, collection strategy librarian. And what we're... We will be looking at pending approval of the budget would be a single deputy director, business operations manager, administrative assistant, the two IT positions, and then the collection strategy librarian, who's just got their full-time librarian, their associate in the curators.
And the only position that we see up here that is not currently filled is the IT.
The IT.
Everything else with the... Okay, well, got it. Okay.
Have we... Do we... I'm assuming we have a job description or do we need to redo a job description for the systems engineer?
There is a job description for the current systems engineer. I would recommend we need to probably take a look at that and see how we would want to structure the position in the organizational chart, to have some flow of, you know, supervisory or...
I agree with you. And I'm just thinking, it was... It's been on the, you know, it's been on our books to hire somebody. That has not been taken away. I mean, it's on there for 2025. I wonder if we shouldn't really work on getting that one in play, you know, getting the job description reworked and go ahead and move forward with trying to hire somebody. You know, we know we need it. We're not taking it out of the budget for 2026. And I think that would be, you know, I think that would be a wise decision to go ahead and start working on trying to find somebody. You know, I think we can...
Or just throw it out there, do we wait till we get the new director?
That's what I was going to say. I think you really need to wait for the new director before you add in a person.
That new person might have different ideas of what technology is.
Well, that's true. That's true. I was just thinking, I know there's been a need, is the problem. You know, there's a real concern that we have no back... There's no depth to that area at all.
Due to the fact that technology is changing so quickly, depending, you know, who knows who comes in, they might have a real strong technology background. Who knows? Just saying.
But I don't want to... I don't want to put IT responsibilities off on the director.
Not at all. It would be a lot.
Yes.
No, not at all. I'm just saying that they might have an idea of who they want.
I agree with you. Well, we're only talking probably, you know, four or five months at the most, so, yeah. I just think that we ought to... Maybe we can at least...
I think that should be one of the first things that that director considers to, you know.
I think it wouldn't hurt us to take a look at the job description and see if we can get it in place and to suggest, you know, at least make that step so that we're prepared to go ahead and get somebody hired, so, for that.
Any other questions on the impact of personnel? We wanted the impact with books and material. So in the recommended budget, we are recommended a reduction to books and materials at a little more than $100,000. We have... We are losing most of our books and materials. The vast majority of books and materials funding does come from the state aid grant, and then it is supplemented by the local contributions. So we know from the state aid grant, we're losing $142,000. We know from local contributions, about $10,000 of local contributions would account for what we're losing. And you'll say, well, that's $152, Ken. Not $102. And that's because we've... Staff has discussed it, and what we would like to propose for at least the year one is using the reserve fund to supplement $50,000 back into the books and materials budget. So instead of $152,000 cut, we're looking at $100,000 cut. This is budgeted. So the one thing I would say is if we pass this budget and it is coming from the reserve fund, we can always reevaluate this in the course of '26 to see where spending goes and maybe then, you know, we reallocate that back if we don't have to. But when looking at the reduction we were taking, setting us back to about $600,000 to $650,000, we are rolling the time back when we last spent. That was about five or six years ago. And we know with inflation and the cost of printed materials, that's going to be pretty dramatic at the existing locations. But that is our role there on that. Other areas that we're having an impact on, we are going to see a reduction in equipment, for the equipment line of $14,200. This is primarily because we're looking at the hotspot lending, and I can show them the details of that. But in the original budget, we had $48,000 put forward to hotspots. We're looking at moving that line down to 35. And the reason for that is we know, we know, you know, based on the matrix and stuff we were looking at, King William residents did use the hotspots, so about a third of a cut to bring that down in line.
And we're going to bring those hotspots back from King William. Correct. Yeah, that's part of the equipment that we'll bring back.
Yes.
Most definitely, because as we're talking E-rate in regards to what E-rate can do for us with hotspot lending, us not having to reinvest in hotspots is a big plus in that. Rent reduction is $31,000. This is mainly the reduction in rent is because we will no longer have the lease space at Upper King William. So when you see a change in the rent facilities line, that's what that is. There's a reduction in telephone and datacom of $10,000. That's, you know, ending the data service and the phone services at Upper King William and West Point are where those cost savings come from. We have a reduction in continuing added vehicles. I've grouped them together because this starts to become very, very low savings. But it's $4,000. And what we're looking at is not having those two branches. We will have a little bit of continuing end savings there. And the closure of the branches leads to a reduction in the use of mileage on the vehicles and delivery going out that far east. So we're factoring the reduction there. We do still, though, have, when we add it all together in regards to contractual insurance and utilities, we have an increase of $30,000. So we're just... We don't have enough cost savings from King William that actually show negative areas in those impacts when compared to '25. So what we're losing doesn't offset the increase in expenses to get us through to the budget. I am working on a section, because I feel like there'll be questions. I just don't know them all, but other questions. And one of the big questions I think would be asked is, should Pierre, I'll ask its remaining local partners, for increased funding for FY '26 to soften the reduction. So we're talking about going back to Hanover and Goochland and saying, hey, we need more money. If you looked at the budget, and if we can go back there and I can jump back to the slide, there's so much information. I get it, and I'm running through it like a freight train. As you can see... As you can see, I have not, we have not, the library has not asked Goochland and Hanover for any more money in changing this budget. And then part of the reason is, it's twofold. We are very late now in the budget process with them. So I think it's too late to go back. And traditionally, what we have seen in regards to this is the other partner jurisdictions generally don't pick up the tab for another partner's exit or another partner's shorting of funding. When that's traditionally happened, we've had to cover those shorts at the branch level and not at the shared level. So for that reason, staff has recommended we not go back to the counties for FY '26 and ask for additional funding. The reality will probably be for '27, we will have to ask for some sort of increase. But we can get away with it for this one year. And then the other questions, the other question that we've thought of so far is who is responsible for expenses incurred closing the King William branches? And that's, we sort of touched on that already. It's going to depend on the memorandum of understanding and having a good MOU written for their exit. So, I mean, there's some of that, you know, we just won't know. But we would like to think it would be the exiting county, based on the previous memorandums. But we'll have to have the memorandum first before I could, you know, state that fully or budget, budget for that.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I have two questions.
Yes.
Okay. My first question, Ken, I don't, I just don't have this information in front of me. But can you tell me what our spent amount was on books and materials in the fiscal year 2024?
In 2024, give me one second, I can.
Okay. And then maybe while I, while you look, I'll ask my second question, which was, I'd like to hear from staff whether they feel that going down to one deputy director is doable with the remaining seven branches?
Speaking of, forever hold your peace.
I will say, going from nine to seven with these two particular branches, which are two of our smaller branches, smaller staff, less traffic, it's, you know, it's still a lot for one, one person to manage seven branches as well as oversee youth and adult programming. Those two jobs would have been split between two deputy directors. So, and I will say, if this is a test case the past six months in kind of operating this way, it is a lot of, a lot of work for.
And that's, that may be something that we, you know, what we might be able to do is step back from the, the responsibilities of the youth and, and family parts and let you as the deputy director deal directly with only the, you know, the other libraries. It's not that you're not doing stuff in the office, and I'm not saying that. But it's just, it, take those responsibilities off your plate. And if they're, you know, I don't know where we would put them, put them if we take them off your plate. I'm just saying, you know, I think it's a matter of, you know, we may have to, and we, you know, at this point, I think, at least for this next year, we're going to have to consider something like that.
I do understand. I mean, this has put us in that, in that situation. It is a, you know, a fear that once you lose these positions, you don't, it would be hard to get them back. I understand that there's an expectation of a reduction in staffing at shared services level because of this change. But it is going to be more, more work for fewer people.
But I think what we may, may need to do is take a look at, you know, how can we take some of that load off of you? And where would we put that load if we've taken it off of you? Do we have people on staff that can help pick up some of that load?
Is that something that, if we do this staff analysis, would that come out in that kind of a review?
I would think it would. I would think it would. We, you know, we talked about going ahead and doing it. I got, I've gotten a couple different viewpoints on that. One viewpoint was that, you know, they, the one person had said to me, if you do a staff review, nine times out of 10, they just ask you to add more. They don't ask you to take anything away. I mentioned it to my husband, who they had done a staff review at his place of work. And they, they combined, you know, they, they said, okay, well, take this piece and let's, you know, this person could pick up one more piece of, you know, so they, they helped reorganize kind of the job load. You know, so it, I'm getting different, different viewpoints from different people. There's a piece of me that feels like it would be beneficial to go ahead and do the job review, you know, to, even if, you know, we don't have to go with recommendations that they give us, but that at least have some other eyes looking at, you know, what we've got and how we can make this work. So that it, you know, because we definitely don't want to lose anybody. And we definitely need to continue doing the things that need to be done, you know. So it's, you know, you gotta, you gotta find a happy medium in there. You know, that was, that's one of the recommendations that, that personally, I think it would be good to go ahead and do that, to do that job, do the staff analysis, have someone else come in and do it.
I'm sensitive to what Jamie said, though. If you lose the position, arguing for that position back is a lot more challenging. So, and you don't want to impact the, there's two things. You certainly don't want to impact the overall functioning of the library system as a whole. But we've now been talking about doing, you know, a, a review and a developing of a plan to put this library into the next five years. So when you lose something like that, trying to rebuild and capture it also would be challenging if we do something like that.
Okay, we've already, we've already reduced one deputy director. I mean, we've already done that. My hope is that if we can get somebody to come in and look at the staffing, that what they can do is, and again, we don't have to do anything that they tell us. You know, we, it's recommendations. But if they can look at, you know, how could we, you know, take a piece from here and put over here, and a piece from here and put over here, you know, they might be able to help us take a, take a look at job responsibilities because what Jamie's going to be heading into, I would say is impossible, you know, where it would be impossible to ask you to do all of that. And I, you know, so I think it's got to, you know, we've got to look at what, what might be some of our options. And I think it would be, and again, it's my own personal opinion. I'm not speaking for the board at all, because this is, you know, we talked about, we've approved the fact that we would do a staffing review, but we, you know, we didn't say the timeline, we said we would put it off. And they, I just feel like if we can get these, the folks we're looking at are people who understand libraries, you know, it's not the companies that we're looking at. And if we can get some other eyes on this, other than us, you know, other than you all who are right smack dab in the middle of it. And it's real hard to, to look at it, you know, from that perspective. So it might be good to have somebody else and just come in and say, you know, these are the things, some of the things that we're seeing. You've got, you know, you've got a person here that you're killing, you know, with the job description. And, and you've got somebody over here who might be able to pick up, you know, a small piece of that. And then maybe somebody else can pick up another small piece of that.
I'm just trying, Barbara, I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult at all. I'm just, I'm sensitive to what she said. And I've always looked at that reserve fund as an opportunity for use in preventing something like she's saying. And somewhere, there should be a note in whatever we do saying, should there be that evaluation demonstrating the concern of losing momentum and not achieving and not using that funding, that that is an option that the finance committee can handle and bring it back to the board?
You can't, it's a, having been with a group that had, that did this, you know, with a reserve fund, and they are now $200,000 in debt. Because you cannot use reserve funds for an ongoing, a recurring expense. You just can't do it.
So you make that point, right? That's a point that is, it's not something that will be continued through the use of the reserve fund. But it does give the opportunity to evaluate, is this the time and can we, I mean, hopefully our, you know, you have no idea what the economic situation will be at the county or the state or the, or the country.
We're looking at, we've already made the reduction, is what I'm saying.
Right.
I, I don't know that we're looking at reducing any more staff at all. I think we're, you know, in fact, we're looking at adding the one position. But I think that I, I just, I, I think it is not a wise idea to go into that reserve fund for staffing. I just don't.
I didn't say that we had to do that. I just wanted to say that it's available.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that, you know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't use our reserve fund. I think we, you know, the idea of putting the 50,000 in from the reserve fund into the budget, I think is a good idea this year. I think that's a very good idea.
Well, and it's for books and materials, which is essential. But I do have a comment about this overall hiring somebody to look at the staff and the procedures and such, and as tying in with a five-year plan, I think in five years, we're not going to recognize this country technologically. And I think that we need to keep an eye on that with our new director has to, in my opinion, has to have an eye for technology. Because the technological changes through artificial intelligence and such, this might be a moot point, because I think that staff evaluation with the onset of AI is going to have a, we're going to have a lot of different options, which could, it could reallocate positions, it could delete positions. It might, we might need a different type of position due to technology. So I think that we need to keep that in mind as we do the evaluation, as we look at staff. And once again, there might be value in having a really good staff evaluation done and process evaluation done to present to the new director, saying, this is the data. What do you think? And that, that could be really helpful. But I think that we also need to remember that the world is changing so quickly that we can't, the old rules don't apply. Maybe the old positions don't apply. A lot of things don't apply because I think we're going to be going ever so more digital. So I just, I think we really need to plan for the future and the changes that will come with technology. And, you know, love it or not, you know, I have my own personal opinions on it, it's here. It's not going anywhere, and it's going to affect all of us. So, and that's part and parcel of a new director and the vision of a thriving library in the future. So, there you go.
To circle back to Ms. Schumacher's question, regarding books and materials for FY '24, I went to the audit first, and I realized we capitalized books and materials and finding the numbers a lot harder than it used to be. So I had to go back. It was 799,600. So we can round up and say $800,000 spent in FY '24. We budgeted for 809,000, so we had about $10,000 remaining when it was all said and done.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So proportionally, what are we looking at? I, I'm sorry, we have to go back? So they had 1024.
800,024, we would be.
And we were down to 702, I think, for this, this year.
We went back and looked, and we had not been, our books and materials budget had not been this low, at least since 20.
I mean, 25, it was reduced, right?
Yeah. 2025, we came in looking at a reduction.
But proportionally, what I'm asking is that 663,000 without King William, is that proportionally about the same as 800,000? Or at least 765, you know what I'm saying? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying.
Percentage wise, are we, have we made a mass reduction?
We, I will say, at 152,000, which was my original number here a couple of weeks ago, it was 20%. So we shaved it to 13 here compared to what we were looking at spending this year. It's a 13% reduction. So it got it, it, it much closer in lines with some of the other, the other items here where before it, I mean, the rent is an anomaly at 20, because that's the least building.
Right.
But when I'm looking at 15 and 12 and 11, 13 is not, not such the eyesore as 20 was, 21 was.
It doesn't sting as much.
It doesn't sting as much. Yeah.
All right.
Are you talking in, in terms of the amount based on the number of users type thing?
What books?
Talking about?
What?
Where you were saying is this 663?
Just in general, books and materials, just whatever that comprises.
What you were saying is that compare with the 800,000, we had ten libraries. Now we have, we're down to seven.
Like proportionally, there are a lot of factors, but it was just kind of, in other words, what I was getting at was that have we done a real reduction in books material budget? Or is it just as, is it just going proportionally?
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I mean.
The straight line as with all the changes.
I think we're talking the same thing. I'm just not saying it.
No, 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 I get what you're saying. And I, I mean, just, it's pretty much, what I'm hearing is we're pretty much in line. We haven't made any real reductions. We're just, we are reducing as we go through the changes of reduced libraries, reduced patronage, et cetera. Is that, well, or is?
I think in the details.
I would say the circulation of those two branches. We are looking at a reduction in our books and materials for our remaining counties.
Okay. And where do you see the reduction occurring the most? Digital, print? I mean, where, where is it?
The early recommendation would be in the physical print and the digital materials.
And how do we, when we say we're reducing digital materials, what does that look like? Does that mean?
It's a variety. I mean, it could, depending on, you know, we have different vendors that have different cost models. So it could be throttling hoopla. So that's a pay-per-use model. So we might have to consider, you know, dropping the amount of checkouts people.
That's what I was getting at. So from seven a month to four a month, something like that?
It, yeah.
I mean, is that just in general? Okay.
Right. But Overdrive is a, you know, a completely different model where we purchase, you know, purchase the materials. So we'd have to take all, all of that into consideration when Jeff is, you know, would be working out his budget for that.
And how open are those, in your experience, are they to negotiation? Do they ever negotiate? Or do they just kind of say?
They're small potatoes.
I know, we are small potatoes. I'm just wondering if they, if they are.
So they are, the, the contracts right now are through a cooperative purchasing agreement that Mid-Atlantic Library Alliance. So there's, we're, yeah, we're not negotiating with them individually. Those are negotiated.
Which doesn't surprise me at all. What you call, Mid-Atlantic Library Alliance?
Mid-Atlantic Library.
Maria?
Malia is the acronym.
Malia, library, something.
Mid-Atlantic, I think it's just Mid-Atlantic Library Alliance.
Alliance, okay.
The extra I always throws me in the mix.
I think it's a lowercase i.
Yeah, it's a lowercase i.
Okay.
That's one of those membership dues that you'll see come up annually.
Right. So that's a consortium of X number of libraries that, that, okay.
Correct.
Yeah. All right. Okay.
And that's, the same applies there for Baker and. And that's, the same applies there for Baker and Taylor and the other large Midwest, take the other large book vendors, that's all through the Malia contract.
Overdrive, Baker and Taylor.
All of them.
Ken, do you use them also for your insurance purposes?
Insurance is, no, insurance is through Virginia Risk, Risk, it's Versa.
Right.
And I can't now remember what the acronyms are, but it's just like the way we use Hanover County.
I was gonna say, Hanover.
Hanover and your other, most of your local governments are using Versa, that's how we go through Versa to get that. You know, once again, it is a budget. So, you know, we move forward with, with, you know, our best, I hate to say guess, but our educated guess based on what we're seeing. You know, we move into 2026, as points been made, that we do have a reserve fund rainy day allocation. So if we, as we start to move into 2026 and we do see things that don't track, we do have the opportunity to adjust. So this is our recommendation and our starting point.
So we need to, the board has to approve allocate, what we're at, what staff is recommending is board approve allocation of up to $50,000 from the reserve fund to cover books and materials only?
So we would be, so we've got 59,000 in the reserve fund. 50 of that goes, is books and materials. There is a little more than 3,000 of that that is due to the increase in the rent and the camp cost for the admin center and the lease. And then there's $6,000 I've pulled from the reserve fund to just balance out in regards to the revenue split percentages between Hanover and Goochlin to get it closer to what their new model will be going into '27. I think which is 82% in '18. So that's where the breakdown of the reserve fund comes from, is from those, those three areas.
82% in '18 is a shared.
That's, I believe that's going to be the new shared, shared split. I might be a percentage off one way or the other, yeah.
Wow.
Sorry, just to clarify that last statement, Ken, so are you saying that 6,000 is to kind of cover, you know, things within the budget that we can't cover by reducing in other areas?
Correct.
And do you expect that amount will be then charged to Hanover and Goochlin in the future?
Yeah, well, it, for right now, it balances out. So I had to, when I looked at, to sort of get into the detail of our shared services and what our shared services could be spent and not ask Goochlin and Hanover for more money. When I backed my way in, the closest I could get in keeping within the percentages going forward was right within a $6,000 window. So it's not particularly one area I can't cut per se, it's just a, it's a mathematical balancing. So if I, it breaks down, it gets closer to saying Hanover's contribution is 82% and Goochlin's is 18, is where that $6,000 comes in.
And then in 2027, the anticipation will be that we will up, you know, the contributions from Hanover and Goochlin, probably at those percentages.
Yeah, depending on what our, our.
To cover the, yeah, to cover that.
Cost within the '27 would be, so you're back to looking at, you know, your merits, your health insurance, your operational costs to see what's there, what other savings we've got from sort of renegotiating. You'll have E-rate coming online with some changes. That is one of the things to point out, the E-rate amount might change a little bit here with what we've proposed. That's generally based on a prior year, so I feel like we're, I, we feel like we're in a good, strong position for '26 with the 30,000, but we might see some change in there going in the future. You know, we are losing Datacom services that are E-rated, but we've also, particularly with the addition of Mount Pilier, that Datacom bill is quite a bit more than what it was last year. So it's a bit of a balancing act. So yeah, there's $6,000 in there with Schumacher, it just balances out to keep the percentages. So I didn't have a weird amount where it was harder to show not, you know, not going back and asking the localities for $1,500 or $4,000 to make it work.
Okay. I, I just have a general question about King William. And that is, I'm not, I'm just trying to pull up the, the original agreement. But I'm just wondering, is it, is it possible to put in the MOU to charge them a fee for leaving early?
It's not been done, but it, you know, we could certainly.
I mean, because we're picking up 50,000, we're at, I mean, we're, basically it's going to cost us an additional 50,000. Is that, that's what I'm hearing, right? From the reserve fund?
From the reserve fund.
Because they want out, well, okay, I mean, you want out so bad, how about?
And they want out early.
They want out early and, you know, it's, it's costing the PRL money. And I don't, I think it's worth asking the question that if they go ahead and maybe they, you know, we charge them 25,000 for early exit or something. I mean, it's worth asking.
I don't know if it's. I've got it down.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any reason legally that we can't do that, but I sure would like to to ask the question.
I've got it down already.
Because I don't, I don't like spending money that, if we have to spend money, you know, pull money out of the reserve fund for the betterment of our library system, I'm all for it. But just because they want out, that's $50,000 that I don't think we should have to spend personally, but I'd like to ask that question.
I've got it down, I've got, right now what I have for the MOU.
$2,000 is for books and materials that we haven't purchased yet.
Yeah, correct. I've got down right now that we need to make sure is included in the MOU, early withdrawal lease penalty, the unemployment amount.
Reimbursement, yep.
The moving expenses, and then I just put down, you know, could we possibly have a, it's like a, it's not a late charge, it's like a.
Well, it's a, it's a.
But it's a withdrawal charge.
I mean, it's the same thing as, you're withdrawing from a contract, there's usually a fee, right? You pull out of a lease, there's a fee.
You do have an annuity.
I think it's a, it's a fair question and I, I'm not afraid to ask them for some money. It's going to be less than they would have paid to stay, so I, I don't know, I think it's worth asking, okay.
They can say no.
Well, they can.
They can say no.
They can, but.
But it's not hard to ask him, I mean.
We also, I mean, it just seems that, that, you know, PRLs were very good to them and for whatever reason, they decided in very, I think, interesting way to pull out and actions have consequences and I think this is a big consequence, so let's ask them, why not? Let's go for it.
I think it's more challenging with only two counties though.
Yeah, it is, so.
Well, I think we may get pushback on this, but that's okay.
I suspect.
But you should ask.
Because it's not something that was in the original agreement.
But I, I don't like being in the position, you know, please sir, maybe we have some more while you're kicking me from behind, you know, I just, I guess I'm feeling a little bit.
We are bending over backwards to do their desired timeline.
Right, right.
So I think that, you know, I, it's worth asking, I think it's worth asking.
Me too, me too. All right. Any other comments, Ken? Thank you, awesome.
Yes, you've done a lot of good work.
Yes.
A lot of good work on this, yeah.
We had, we had a bit of discussion, I, I think in regards to the personnel stuff, I, you know, the, the choice between deputy director and IT. Yeah, it's a tough one, I mean, it's.
That, once again, you know, I keep going back to this new director person, whoever, who knows how that person will look upon the structure. I, I don't know, I, it's something we have to.
We never came to a recommendation for whether we want to do the staff analysis. Do we want to wait till this person comes in or do we want to have something that we can share with them when they come in, or how do we want to do that?
Well, I think that it's, obviously it's a board discussion, but I, I would like to recommend to the board that maybe we go ahead and, and get a fresh pair of eyes to look at how we, because it could be beneficial to the new director. That's kind of what I'm thinking.
I think the director would be welcome, the material, really, if I was that person.
And like Barb said, we may or may not agree with the recommendations.
Yeah, we just have to do it, we, it's giving us another pair, you know, another set of eyes looking at it, looking at it.
What was the cost involved with that, did we look at the?
We did not get that, we were kind of waiting until the, the decision about, from King William came about.
Because that's going to be another.
About the email.
Right, that was a recommendation from the Berkeley group, which was.
That's right, and they said wait for the new director.
They did, and then they had some restructuring in their group and their focus of their organization and recommended another consultant that specialized in libraries, which would, which would be an option we certainly could, could get.
I think we had, the figure was thrown out by somebody about that it would be like 20,000.
Okay, and that's 20,000 that we're going to have to pull out of the reserve fund?
Reserve fund, yes.
I mean, we know that straight out of the gate, so. Which even makes my argument for getting King William to 20.
Do you think we ought to go ahead and put this on the?
Yes.
On the bud, or on the agenda for the next meeting?
We should have a discussion about my recommendation and get it, get the ball on, I think. So, Ken, you'll be presenting this at the board meeting?
Finance committee desires to be moved forward.
Yeah, because I think the explanations are excellent and we will be asking for more from 50,000 from the reserve fund, up to 50,000, right? Have I got that straight?
Yep, up to.
I think you've really covered all the bases and I love the visual presentation, because I'm a visual thinker and if I can see it in front of me, it makes a huge difference. Well done. Do you guys have any more thoughts on it? Anything to discuss?
No, I mean, I would say, you know, I liked your points about technology and it made me start thinking back. PRL has actually been kind of on the forefront of many different kind of cusp of different changes. I think about public computers, one of the first libraries to have Wi-Fi in our buildings, first in the area to have eBooks. So, you know, it has been a tradition of PRL to, you know, to stay on the cusp of those changes too and be on top of them. AI is, is an interesting technology, yeah, that, and not sure how that is going to impact a lot of different way, organizations, especially libraries, and our responsibility to help our citizens learn about these technologies too. Which is, you know, is really important.
That's why it's important for us to, to get a five-year plan, you know, in place. You know, we had the, you know, the gatestop one that we did last year that I'm glad we did, but we need to have a real.
But we really, we really need somebody who is visionary in terms of technology for the five-year plan, because. Are people coming in to the branches and asking about AI and what is Chatbot and what is Block or whatever it's called, and what is this and what is that?
I have not heard that, there's a lot of discussion in the library community about this is coming, how are, how are we supporting folks learning about this, how are we using it in our libraries?
I mean, I think that would be a great outreach to the community to provide informational gatherings about AI and how it affects the library. Not to give you guys more to do, but there's got to be somebody out there.
It's kind of the same with re-dprinting, we, we did the same with that and now we, you know, we have that as just a standing opportunity, so, yeah, it's.
That's great, well, it's the next thing and I think there's probably people out there that are willing to come kind of evangelize about AI and talk about how it's going to affect the libraries and such. I would be very interested to learn more about that, so. All right, well, I think that, do we have any more to discuss about King William, anybody? Because I know Goochlin is meeting today, so I think it'll be a done deal by dinner time tonight. Okay, do we have any other business we'd like to discuss with finance committee? I don't think I do.
Chris, do you have anything else?
Oh, I was just going to ask about the West Point breakdown. Did, we had talked about, talking about that at this meeting?
Oh, right.
For what?
The West Point, the breakdown on how the money that we gave them for their new library, how it was spent, what they.
Grr, yeah. So to recap, we had offered up to 150,000, correct?
Correct.
And we actually spent. Ken's not letting us know.
Ken's going after the numbers.
He's going after the numbers, yep.
While he's doing that, when I, I pulled our inventory sheets, so this would be inventory about computer equipment, furniture for West Point and upper King William and started to go through, similar to the process we did for, for King and Cleveland, what belongs to PRL, what. And, you know, there, the furniture at West Point is interesting because King, the county paid a portion, the town paid a portion and PRL paid a portion to the, for that furnish, furniture.
Can we use that furniture? Is that, and we need to find out.
I'm going to get the money.
We need to find out if this new company wants the collection.
Right, that is a, I mean, to me, that is a question we need answered from, from our perspective, exactly. Because, you know, are we boxing it, moving it, you know, redistributing what we can? Or are we leaving it there for them to relabel, you know, do what it is they're going to do? And of course, that takes planning, so we, we will need to know the answers to those questions. I, I would say, I mean, for my comfort level, by the end of this month, so that we can make plans to.
Yeah.
Do we need to shut down the branches really, so that we can?
That's an important number to have.
Well, I mean, if we own a third, if we're responsible for paying a third of the expense of the furniture, I mean, we don't want to be. We'd like to be as.
It's a third of an expense of the furniture, right? We paid 11% of all invoices, correct?
It was 13%.
13.6, technically.
So 13.6 of, well, you know what I'm getting at, right? Is, is, I think we're due reimbursement, we paid for all that furniture, because we don't want, I mean, I'm sure they want to keep their furniture, what are we going to do with a third of West Point's furniture? But.
I don't think it's a financial thing, no.
To me, it's a, well, and also, I'll never get over the fact that they opened or had their opening May 4th and then wanted out literally two months later. It's like, thank you for this new library, PRL, thank you for helping us build this beauty and now we're out. I, you know, that never sat well with me, so.
So is, is it correct, you said 13.6, Ken?
Yeah, 13, so 13.6 was, with the original allocation of 150,000 dollars to the total estimated budget, which was right around 1.1 million, was 13.6. Mr. Edwards from the town actually billed us 13.11, so a little less, when it was all said and done. We spent a total of 92,059.52, so 92,000 dollars.
92,000, out of a, out of a 150,000 potential.
Potential, yes. And a lot of that was because West Point, their, their cost-saving initiatives to bring the cost down.
They did very well. But I, you know, that, that gives, I think, more reason for us to ask for.
Reimbursement.
Of, you know, make that, that, you know, what I'm referring to is the penalty for leaving early, but really what it comes down to is a reimbursement for some of the beautiful furniture fixtures, et cetera, that PRL paid for.
I was gonna say, West Point was also part of a furniture refresh prior. I was going to say, K, uh, West Point was also part of a furniture refresh prior to this, when they were in the old location, I think back in 2019. We had about 25,000 for Ashland West and West Point, and, and that was the cost of that, those furnishings, 100% were paid for by PRL.
So, I mean, I, I, once again, that to me gives us even more justification for requesting.
And, and you know what we can do? If we, if, I think we can put justification in when we ask for this. These are the reasons that we're thinking that, that we are asking for this reimbursement is, we gave you 92,000 for a library that you opened, and then you told us you're leaving. We, you know, provided new furniture for you back in 2019, and we paid entirely for it. So I, I think, you know, the more, you know, to say to them, you know, it's more than just the, you're leaving goodbye, you know, type thing, and you're leaving us.
In a bind, you know?
Was King William also, did they have 13.1% and West Point covered the remaining percentage? Is that correct?
King William covered between 26 to 27%, the county, and West Point covered about 60%.
Yeah.
Yes. The town actually absorbed the majority of the cost. And that's, I, I think it's also, they also managed a project, so that's why, you know, the bills came from the town of West Point, and we, we reimbursed them.
Right, well, uh, okay.
Maybe, can I ask an additional question?
Mm-hmm.
Were, were there additional things that we purchased for West Point beyond, like, that we didn't consider to be part of the renovation that were purchased from PRL's side?
We paid for directly.
Did we add any, did we do any additional computers? I was trying to think of that and the monitor.
Well, won't we get all those back? Won't we take back all of them?
Yes, when I went through the inventory, any of the computer equipment, yes, we, we would retain those, because, you know, I was looking at it from the perspective of what can we reuse throughout the system?
Sure, sure.
So, yes, those things would be coming back.
And we talked about the hotspots that we're going to bring those back.
Yes.
Yeah. Do they have new projection or?
We actually reused, so the projector that is there was projector that we had purchased as part of the AV equipment enhancement back in 2017 or so. I don't know. But it, it was a while ago, so that is actually PRL equipment. However, some of the newer purchases in there were, were purchased as part of the, the renovation, so that monitor that's on wheels.
So the AV equipment upgrades were, when, when would they probably?
2017?
I think that'd be 2017. I'd have to kind of go back and find it, because it's.
Yes, so the projector would, we would be retaining that, but there, the, the monitors that are in, say, the study rooms, all of that would stay. So there, there's a significant, you know, the technology and the, and the building, no.
For the board meeting, could we, could we get a list of the, the materials that will come back to PRL? The equipment and stuff?
Just the, the first, sure, sure, I could.
I mean, I think that would be kind of interesting to see what's coming back.
Sure.
Just, I don't think.
I'd say almost everything at the Upper King William branch were things that came over from other locations here and there. There was a, pretty much everything there was, is owned by, by PRL. It's not anything that is owned by the county.
Yeah, at Upper King William. Okay. Yeah, that, I would really like, that'd be interesting.
We have not asked them whether they want to keep that material or equipment?
There, no, there's some things that, I think you and I had talked about, you know, some of the, I was trying to remember what we talked about, that we would, you know, it, it's just as easy to leave it with them than it is. The problem is, again, we're not dealing, going to be dealing, this discussion is almost more between PRL and this new company that they're going to go with, you know, because the new company is going to tell them.
Because they've got a contract, that's right.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't know where they are in that process, that they may need to make some of these decisions without consulting them, because we will need to know.
Is that, is that true? Because our agreement is with King William.
No, but what I'm saying is, when it comes time to decide whether they're going to keep the collection or, or whether we have to get it out of there, it's going to, you know, this new company.
Oh, you're talking about the collection.
Yeah, the new company may say, we don't want the collection, and there, we have, you know, they're a monstrous company, and they provide books all around the country, and they, they buy them in bulk.
So you're referring to just the collection? I was thinking about the laptops.
Well, and, and that may be the same thing with equipment. They may already have the equipment, you know, that they've got a contract with some company that provides all the equipment to all their libraries, and they do all the maintenance and things on, on their libraries.
Right, that was our question about the copier. I mean, you know, it, we would offer them to take over the lease, but we don't know if this company has agreements with or already negotiated contracts with other vendors that they would be working with.
They may not even want what we think we could just leave.
So who's our MOU with?
MOU is with King William, but King William has got to get the information from this company.
The worst thing is King William has their.
Yeah, and she, what she's saying is they're not even finished with the contract with this company yet.
Well, you know what? That is not our problem.
It's not, well, it is in one respect, because we got to have the information.
But we also have the, we also have the right to say, we need to know by X date, or this will, you know, if not this, then that, right?
And that's what I would assume you would see in the MOU, is, is that if you wanted to.
If you want to keep the collection.
You know, us to transfer the, the ownership of the collection.
And it will cost this much. I mean, we got to be right down to the penny about everything. If you want to do this, it's going to cost this. La da 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 da.
That's correct.
Because I do not want PRL picking up any expenses that we don't absolutely have to.
Which is why this timeline is just shrinking day, day to day, because if they are saying they do not want the collection, then we've got to move that, you know, and, you know, especially with Upper King William, if they are not signing a lease for that space, we've got to be out by June, June 30th, so.
Which will, yeah, okay.
I mean, as I say, there are a lot, I mean, a lot of decisions about when we will actually close those branches, so that we can have time and utilize our staff there to help us with this process. So then that was something with King and Queen we did not have to, to do, because they, they took ownership of the space and the furniture and all of that. We only had to worry about removing the collection at that point.
Do you know if they're planning, and I'm just, this has absolutely nothing to do with part of this discussion, but do you know whether they're going, they're planning to stay in that Upper King William building, or are they going to?
I have no, I have no idea.
I was just curious. It isn't, it isn't our problem. They want out of that building as soon as possible.
The sooner we get out of that building, the better, because of problems associated with that building.
So, so when is that lease up in the Upper King William area?
The lease, and we're doing month by month right now.
Yeah, it was, we did not.
And hoping and praying that ADA doesn't.
I would say at this point, I don't think they'll come after us for that, knowing that there's an end date, but they may take it up with.
We'll see.
With the county, if the county chooses to, to stay in the space.
Okay, well, a lot of work on the MOU.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Michelle was here, I guess she.
Yeah, she's, she is tied up with another account that she couldn't, and she's not going to be there tomorrow either, but, yeah.
All right.
It isn't that she didn't want to be here, she just can't.
Okay, well, guys, any other business you'd like to discuss? Finance-wise, anything?
No.
Okay.
No, I think this is the over. I mean, I will say, I think, in regards to FY '25, you know, budget-wise, finance-wise, everything is, is looking, looking fine. You know, we, we will probably have more savings in personnel and salaries than anticipated, because we've had positions that's been left open, waiting for King William's decision. But in regards to the other areas, you know, books and materials, supplies, everything seems to be, be tracking out.
Okay.
And you said we haven't purchased the new van yet?
No, we're, no, we've not, no, we.
But we are.
Well, yes, that is on.
We are going to do that, yeah, good. I didn't want us to say, no, we wouldn't purchase it.
No, I think, because we had a toll and recharge cost just for one the other day, and, so, yeah, we're still on the, the van has got to be.
Yeah, got to be.
The fleet's got to be sort of revitalized.
I agree.
Well, due to the fact that there won't be so many, there'll be less miles on those vans not going out to King William, so there is that.
There is that, yeah.
Okay, well, unless there's any other business to discuss, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.